Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the North Branford Board of Education Special Board Meeting, Thursday, August 22nd, 2024. We're in session. Okay. Roll call, please. Chairman Babbittie?
Here.
Vice Chair Noffier?
Here.
Secretary Zianin?
Yes.
Judy Dannon?
Here.
Zachary Kaner?
Here.
Kim Dawson?
Here.
Victoria Lanza?
Here.
Okay.
I would like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. Any visitors to address the board this evening? Any visitors? Any visitors that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of previous minutes. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the August 22nd, 2024 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Passes with one abstention. Chair member, Bannon. Okay. Now we move to superintendent report.
This is the quickest intro I think we've ever had.
Coming off the summer?
Coming off the summer, great. Firstly, I'd like to thank the board for their flexibility in moving the meeting out of week. We obviously had many things going on over the several months with prior commitments, so I appreciate your flexibility in being able to come and meet tonight. As you know, last Tuesday, we still have held the recognition for our field hockey team, our state championship field hockey team. So it was great. I want to thank Marjorie Marcy for being there. Mayor Angeloni was there as well. We had majority of the girls and their parents here. Some were underclassmen who were working or at camps. And they thoroughly enjoyed being here, being recognized, getting a chance to take some pictures and spend the last times for the seniors before going off to college. So I spoke briefly, and Todd and Megan also were present. And, you know, just for the board, you know, someone who's been around education for many, many years, having played sports at the high school, college, and another level, and having kids who have done the same. To win a state championship, it's really hard to do. And I don't think really people understand and appreciate what our teams have been able to do in the field hockey team under Babbittie. And we are so blessed to have her and her leadership and who she is and what she gives to her student athletes, not only for when they play those four years, but for life after. Her coaches are former players of hers. Babbittie goes to all of their games and camps, and these ladies still play into their 40s, and she's there with them. So it's a culture, it's a program, it's all of those things that not many communities have. So I want to just publicly thank her and her staff, her coaching staff, they're amazing in those accomplishments. So thank you for being there.
The rings were beautiful. One of the seniors has three rings. She had them all on as she came by to shake hands. She had all three.
Super Bowl.
It was beautiful. They were very sibling. Really nice.
Kudos to our teams. Communications, obviously, coming off the summer month. At the next board meeting, the administrators will get you off the speed on everything for their opening days, to what's going on, to some of the exciting things that are happening in the schools, so you'll get those. Authority to hire. As you know, if you've been following the news at all, you've seen many districts. Now it's about the cell phone policy, which is the good news. We already have ours in place, and it mirrors what the state wants to do, so we don't have to do a thing with our policy. But finding certified teachers in a lot of districts are really struggling. There's nine shortage areas right now. There are subjects that I've never seen on that list before, and a lot of districts are opening up with substitutes. We are so fortunate, we've been able to hire five certified teachers. I'll speak a little bit more about their opening day here with our administrative team, but I'm just going to go through their names. Jerome Harrison, our art teacher. Christina Lundgren is here with us with a master's degree. Obviously, you've met our new principal here on the doll room at the last meeting, coming on as a new student. Sid Hogan is a graduate of North Branford, was a great student athlete here for us. She's going to be teaching special education at NBIS. Erica Badgwick is our home ec teacher at the high school, and she's coming on with great experience to run our home ec dynamics program. Caleb Hardou is our new instrumental music teacher at the high school, who we're really excited about. And Joe Cristofano is going to teach language arts at the middle school. And I can tell you, I had a chance just to, you know, meet them through the process, but then, again, this week, and speaking with the administrators, with Carter and Sarah, after they spent the entire day with them, they just were, wow, we really were so fortunate. And they want to be here, they want to come into a district like North Branford and be a part of our teaching community, so.
That's great.
Great job from administrative team in their hiring process and getting the best quality candidates to work with our students.
What classes will the home ec teacher be teaching?
What?
What classes will the home ec teacher be teaching? What falls under that?
Right now, we have the nutrition and food service, advanced food service. This batch, I also have certification, food child development.
Oh, great.
Child development in past, and she has a bridge of that. So we'll get you down the road, have a conversation about the world, and bring back to those electives, and she's excited about that.
Nice. That's great. I'll just add in real quick, but taking child development at North Branford High School is what they need to have to take care of today, so I highly suggest bringing that back.
Okay. Thank you. So that was under my authority to hire the updates of the five new certified teaching positions. We're going to go right into curriculum, and have Carter come and talk about a number of different things, so if you want to come on, come on back. You want to stay there?
Yeah.
I don't bite.
If you can't hear them, then just follow me. Come on, go ahead, Carter.
All right, so just to give you enough to have a professional development build summer and what's happening in the buildings, during the summer, several staff members are continuing their education, so we have staff members working on doctorates, master's degrees, certification, advanced degrees in administration. We've had some significant courses, and now the chair is becoming invisible, and that will continue to fall. Opening the buildings this year, one more for the summer. I wanted to specifically add Jill Dolphis, she's a dress teacher and a teacher at the high school. She was fortunate to receive special recognition as a fellowship in the housework program, so she was part of that this year this summer in Poland, and she'll be learning back to that in preparation to blow the English department's social studies.
Oh, awesome.
Which is great, so a real honor for her. Other things that we're working on as we open the year, we're continuing to do our work around the district construction visions, that includes that idea of making it visible and building thinking cultures throughout our schools. So teachers in all buildings, we'll be working on that. You'll hear from me a little bit about the new evaluation system, so our staff will be doing some learning and preparation around that system. We're going to continue our work on the usual responsive state school climate in all buildings, some larger changes that will go in place if we have to address. Another big wish is improving operationalizing our MTSS system and another acronym in education, I know. Multi-tiered systems of support, and related with that means just making sure every student has the capability to be successful, whether academic or social. Our A5 teachers will be working on creating an art curriculum, so there'll be extensive training in TES syndrome around that. And of course, we have our open houses for our elementary schools during the B days as well, so teachers do a great job preparing for that and building some pieces of evidence. And there'll be some work around math day in Germany, so full face in every building for all our staff. Our parents and specialist teachers are going to be working on fostering independence and technical functioning, so they have supportive dance layer training in that area. That pretty much highlights kind of the overview of what professional learning will look like, so open the buildings. To piggyback on what Scott said about the teacher orientation, so we felt the same way, really fortunate to have five great new teachers coming on boards with a lot of energy and enthusiasm and a lot of gratitude they expressed for feeling like they ended in the right place, and feeling like this is really a welcoming community where everyone's great and looking forward to the small feel of our grand family connected to them. So I think we came to that great thing for them, it's talented, it's small class. It's that the morning, learning a lot of rules and procedures and policies, but we also did a lot of work around the district construction vision, the type of learning and instruction that we want to see for kids, so they did a lot of hands-on learning of that with me. Let's see, I think there's still on the list, you have in front of you, I think, next of subcommittee's curriculum instruction, and it'll be back in the evaluation.
So if you look at B, C, D, those are the dates of curriculum instruction, subcommittee starting September 19th going through June.
Those occur prior to these meetings, is that how it's set up?
So those who are on the curriculum subcommittee, who I believe Beth, Zach, and Judy. That's what those are, right. I don't have the phone, I'm going to remember. So listen.
It's not easy.
So do those dates work?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the 2024-2025 Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee meeting dates as submitted. I'll second. Make the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Opposed? Passes unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carter, back to you.
Back again. So every year at the August board meeting, the board approves the teacher evaluation and teacher evaluation plan. Over the last, you know, maybe seven years or so, that plan has not made very much. Over this year, it's an extensive change to effect in relation to state statute. The guidelines really, we came in to kind of do a better job of making that a more coaching and supportive process, and less of a time-consuming and rigorous laboring type of process for the teacher and the evaluator in the process. So the plan that you have in front of you, just to give you some highlights that really made a difference this year, so it allows for specific differentiation roles, so meaning the variation that we have in teaching course, it's not all-classroom teachers, physical college, social workers, school counselors, specialist teachers, alley artist teachers, all of those. So there is a differentiation of roles for those different staff members. A big push to reduce the burden of paperwork and process within the system, which we all appreciate, and we're in a work ethic. Really focusing and defining the things that matter, so there'll be a shift in reverse in the way that we define teaching, and that's again, an actual reverse or state-based reverse of the UDOT. But within that, we're really focused on a limited number of competencies. We have a finish review for reverse estimateers under the teachers, but 43 areas. This is putting us down to two, three core areas that we want to be back and, so that's an improvement in the way that happens. It's focusing on educator growth and agency, and really returning a lot of the responsibility and pushing the process back to the teacher, so the addition isn't to them. And then trying to really connect their goals, the teacher they're identifying and working with it, about the way we're educating them, to specific professional learning. So doing something to help the teacher achieve a goal that they're working towards and that they want to be better at. And then really the big portion, and I think you've already talked about this last year, about that timely, accurate action to feedback, and really being a big part of the process, that co-sharing, supportive relationship between evaluator, digger, and C, and providing that timely feedback, is helpful in action. So that's kind of the big overview. It's a shift for everyone who's going to be working on it this year. It's going to require a new approach for teachers to really have sort of autonomy in how they develop goals, and we're all pulling up our sleeves and working together on it, and that's kind of the message. So it'll be a big part of professional learning throughout the year, the issue that we're ready to adapt to. So that's in front of you, and we ask you to adopt that. It's a lot of hard work, but professional evaluation, professional adult evaluation video over time, vibration between the unions, so lifetime effort.
Mrs. Benson, you state. Ben. Ben approved.
Ben approved, yes.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or questions on that before we take our vote? No? Okay. So I'll make the motion to approve the North Branford. Okay, someone else make a motion?
Oh, I can do it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Branford Public Schools Educator Evaluation and Support Plan 2024-2025 as submitted.
I'll second. Okay, we'll take the vote now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. Back to Carter. We got one more. Oh, but he didn't discuss that.
Some of the other motions you made for the second one.
Yeah, to discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty vocal.
I'll make a motion to approve the North Branford Public Schools Administrator Evaluation and Support Plan 2024 and 2025 as submitted.
I'll second. Thank you. And do we have Carter explain that one, or is it?
They were bundled together.
They were bundled together.
Very similar.
Okay. All right, so then we'll take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We won't get the finance report.
So I'm going to just go through, I'm not going to go through the finance report, I'm just going to speak to, I sent an email out about questions, that if you have any questions this week or before the next meeting from this report, please email them. I know I haven't gotten responses back immediately. The big thing, I think, the first page of the Fund 25, the request for that money, it was zero out to $5, that was the charge from the board prior to when there's the expenses there by object of what it was spent on. And then you can go through and just look at the property liability insurance, there's comp, and then by object. So if you want to spend some time with that, and then any question you have, email Martha directly, if you want to CC me, that'd be great.
Do you want a motion for this?
Well.
Or just wait a month in case anybody has any?
I mean, I don't think we need to accept the report, it's just it's a part of it, and then if you have any questions on it.
Okay.
We're not taking any action, so. The next item is the North Branford Public Schools Retirement Plan modification. In conversation with Anthony Esposito, over the last several weeks, we were discussing employees who were not a part of the administrator or teachers union, who have money invested in the North Branford system to have the age backed down from 70 to retirement age of 65. During COVID, it dropped to 59 and a half. The IRS was in favor of that, they were okay with that. We felt that there was the happy medium at 65 for people that do retire, that want to access their money. My personal feelings are that, you know, times are tough right now, if you retire at 65 and you have your nest deck there, which you have to wait five years to access it, that could be very, a hardship for many people. So the town adopted theirs Tuesday, they're moving theirs from 70 down to 65. It has zero impact on the Board of Education for any liability or for us to be at risk of anything with our, if you're in favor, we vote on it, we pass it off to Mission Square, and we're down with it. So I'm supporting it, and I'll send it to the town then.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the plan documents between the North Branford Board of Education and Mission Square Retirement to change the in-service distribution age permitted under the plan from 70 and a half years of age to normal retirement age of 65. Second. And any discussion? We'll take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the vote passes unanimously.
I thank you on behalf of our employees for supporting them in that. Carter's back up, the diversity plan, the state has charged us with coming up with some modifications in the hiring process and things that, well, we need to do in accordance with the state. We submitted a plan, the plan has been reviewed, modified, and we're waiting for our acceptance. So Carter's just going to do a very brief overview of the plan.
So the thing in front of you, just the highlights of it, the state asked us to create efforts to improve the diversity, do that more, of course, more closely matched to diversity of the student body. So that's the state initiative, those reasons are crucial, lack, meaning it doesn't support them necessarily, just to body them. The same is true for North Branford, so they want us to look at our demographics and come up with a plan to improve that. So as you look through the plan, we looked at things to improve our hiring process, we looked at ways to promote and grow interest in education within our own students of different backgrounds, to enter the workforce, and then we're looking for universities to recruit diverse candidates as potential. There's no money associated with it, we look at the plan, there's some records to cost, those are existing contracts that are very out of universities, so we would just be asked to mess every different university that's to those universities for candidates of diverse nature to help us meet this criteria.
Dr. Carter, there is money in the budget, though, for full-time year-round interns?
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
Longstanding, much like.
Okay. And is there any, is there anything, any enforcement with this that you can see if we don't meet for some reason those goals?
It doesn't appear, the way the legislation is written, it is a requirement to submit a plan, there does not seem to be any legal mandates of monitoring or repercussions of the plan, and I don't know if that will be revisited in the next iteration.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, anybody? No? Okay.
Thank you for the note on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the North Branford Public Schools Diversity Plan as submitted. Second. Okay. Take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you again. Facilities have a word, I'm going to have John Florio come forward, sit the hot seat. John, you live in St. Paul, you know I can't hear you from up here.
You can have a brown.
I'm putting you in the hot seat. So before we start with the overview of what's been going on, it's been a crazy, crazy summer with building projects and things that had to be done or in the process of being done. And John's just been amazing, and I know the administrators are going to knock their heads where he's been everywhere, in every building, with his crew, making sure, right down to today, with requests for, I need the TDS courtyard, and John, so we call in the town crew, and they're getting that together, we have bees in the bonnet, and we need them sprayed, so everything that's going on, they've done an amazing job. But before we get into the update, we have, you've heard me talk about the storage building, athletic storage building at the high school, and I just want to update you, and these are a couple of emails from back in March requesting harbor money, and we were looking for at the time about $95,000 to do our storage buildings there, and that number has been reduced drastically because of donations and in-kind services by people who knew. John is actively working right now, and the council wanted to, and they pushed it out to September because I want to give him enough time. He's getting drawings and prints done, he'll have that ready for the permanent project committee, we've all seen that. I'm excited about that, I'm excited that the permanent project committee is going to take that on, because there's a wealth of knowledge there, and there's a wealth of knowledge that supports this, because this is going to be a student-based learning experience, where the kids are going to be hands-on, working and building this. If you're not aware, at the high school, the ticket building was built by our high school shot class with Fran Marola and with an architect. The press box that sits in the bleachers was also built as a student-based project. This building will also be the same thing, so it'll be designed professionally by an architect, the kids will get back into school, the first part of that will be to learn about the process, but then when we hit the ground running and this gets approved, they'll be a part of that as they go from everything with webinars to site zoning plans to engineer, laying the foundation. The town will work and do a lot of the site work, and then we'll have local contractors who already are committed to me to donate and to do things. So this is exciting, and we're anxious to get that going. So in September, the building committee will hear a lot more and have plans from John.
Do the students get credit for that?
Through their class, they do.
What class?
So it'll be Introduction to Construction or Advanced Construction.
Awesome, great.
Couple different classes.
That's fantastic.
And we have engineering, we have an engineering project, lead the way, where they could also do some work as well with that. So it's, it's good. We built the walkways in the center of the pork mart several years ago, they did it with, they gave our shifts, the kids would go out, they'd have a evening break at, you know, excellent morning, we'd feed them water, and donut, and coffee, and then we'd get them back to work, and they really got to see what, you know, this is what real life is like, you know, they're working in eight-hour day, you're working. And then, most recently, is that high school was constructed in front of their eyes, and I would walk by and look out the second floor of the old building, at three gentlemen standing there in 20-degree weather, you know, putting steel beams together with a wrench, and the kids are standing there, and on, like, yeah, guess what, they don't get, it's too cold today, I don't feel that working today. So this will be a great project for them, so we're excited. John, that, as you said, we're really excited about this project, we want to get the kids involved. We need more kids in the trades.
Absolutely, without doubt.
What's interesting, they'll be proud of the fact that they, that they had a project that they were involved in. Storage building, that is very much needed also. Yeah, yeah. So. No, be quiet. The high school, or, excuse me, the police station just built a beautiful, beautiful facility. And as you look at the facility, to the left is a five-bay steel structure that is climate-controlled. It's beautiful. Behind Franny's building there, he put up an additional 10,000-square-foot storage building. You know, because as we acquire more things, we have golf carts for our security, for our senior citizens for graduation, we have lawnmowers, we have, you know, other things paid for our fields, we have nowhere to store them, we put them in four trailers right now that are not climate-controlled, the load gets in, and then we end up throwing half of the material away, so this is much needed.
So part of it will be for storage?
What's that?
Sorry.
Part of it is storage, and then team stuff. So our football team will not be trouncing and bringing their cleats into our brand-new $74 million building. Their cleats and shoulder pads will stay in one of the bays. The field hockey team will keep their goals in there, the soccer team will keep their pads in there, you know, so all the teams during their season will have a designated storage area that will keep their equipment and their things safe and.
And where is it now?
It's in nowhere, we don't have it.
They're trailers.
It's in steel trailers.
Not their equipment, not their equipment.
So they, they carry their things home, they take their cleats.
I see, I see, so they, so they'll actually have a designated.
Designated area for, and for their equipment that they practice with, goals and jumping pits and.
And how much of that will be of the storage unit, will be storage in comparison to?
It's five, it's five bays, we're going to have one bay for the golf carts, we're going to have one bay for storage, which we will have the field paint, and we'll have the tractor, and we'll have stuff like that. Two bays will be designated to sports storage, we have the pole vault mats, all that stuff, football has things, baseball has stuff, they'll be committed to that. One bay, I'd like to take, if we have the space, I'd like to take that for what we call district storage. We're overflowing at the seams in every school with things that we want to save, but we have no room for them, and if we're putting them places we should, like extra desks, extra chairs, stuff like that, that we don't want to throw away. And I could buy in bulk some supplies, I buy supplies by the skidload, I get a better deal, we can put stuff in there, okay, and then we can pick them and deliver them to the school. So that's kind of why we wanted five bays, so it's kind of the utility building that we can utilize all five bays the way we need to. So hopefully, it works out the way we want.
Now, those things that you're storing them in now, that are not climate-controlled?
No.
Are we paying for those?
Yes, we are. We pay them up close to $9,000 a year for storage.
What does it, what will it cost to get rid of those?
Nothing, they come to them. They come to rent. We have two empty right now, we're going to get two out of there, you know, we'll leave two until this is completed, and those will go.
How many square feet will this storage unit be?
What's that?
Square feet, square footage of this?
It'd be 30 feet by 80 feet.
Okay, and that, you seem to think that that, it seems like every bay is spoken for, is that?
Yeah.
So it's enough space?
Yeah. Yeah, it's good to. For the project, it depends on what we have for this.
For space, okay.
Space, we maximize it. None of the winter sports will. None of the winter sports will store out there. They're all indoor sports. So it's really, it's soccer, football, field hockey that are out in that area. Track is the same for indoor and outdoor. So we really have four teams that will share a couple of bays.
And was there anything left in contingency from the high school renovation to pay for any part of this?
We won't use that for this. That will be for the new turf field.
Okay, and we're not there yet.
And the manufacturing side.
And we're not finished yet anyways, so, right?
Any of the... Go ahead.
Mr. Schoolmaker, my question is, what would be the plan to acknowledge the people who have donated monetarily or in-kind services?
There'll be a plaque on the building, and we'll bring them here.
So we can make that publicly known?
Absolutely.
Who helped us out?
And have them come here with the students as well. And we will put a plaque on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Great question. Thank you. And so...
Oh, kind of piggyback, well, a little bit, I guess. Donated money, where does that... How does that work?
They make a donation. We could go through the head foundation if we want to as a 501(c)(3). We've got a profit for holding for that. In-kind service and donations of product, we're fine with. But this isn't going to be a lot of money. And, you know, we were healthy at the end of this past year with things that we were able to do. So this is going to be a win-win for the town.
Does that get tracked in a financial report?
Yeah, it will.
I'm thinking, you know, I'm just spitballing here, and I don't know the process. I mean, I first time with that. But so the money that gets put in, but prior to, that's all prior to the approval process from the town and the board, the permanent project committee, right?
Right. The permanent project committee will do the ones that...
And then once that's executed, then they'll have a, somebody will take over the budget of the program.
Yeah, John will do them.
John, are you taking that role?
John's going to do all that.
Okay, all right, perfect.
He'll handle that. That's his expertise.
That's good. That's good. Thank you.
So he'll handle all of that.
It's one of his many aspects.
Yeah.
All right, John. Okay, your summer facilities report. All the schools have been properly cleaned, ongoing. They will be ready to open on Monday, and they will be ready for students on Wednesday. 10 weeks goes by real quick when you're trying to clean almost 500,000 square feet, but the guys do have the job. If they've been in the buildings, they look great. All of our safety inspections have all been completed in order for us to open up school. All our alarms, our elevators, our sprinkler systems, any fire extinguishers, anything having to do with safety, before we can open schools, all taken care of. Reports in state Connecticut. All of our air filters have been changed in all of our buildings, making sure our quality is good. So the fire marshal started his inspection today. Started at Totucket Valley at Stanley T. Williams. He will move on to Jerome Harrison tomorrow, MBIS on Thursday, and the high, on Monday, and MBIS in the auditorium on Tuesday. We'll get his report when it's done. He gives us time to do his corrections whenever he issues his report. So we'll start at the high school. High School Gilbein was in this summer doing their punch list items. According to Carson Collier of QA&amp;M, they achieved about 65% of the punch list items that they needed to get done. So it will be ongoing even after school starts. That's in the original first phase. We don't have the punch list list for the second phase because it hasn't been turned over yet. So that's ongoing. They're on schedule for the second phase with the exception of the gymnasium, which will be slightly delayed due to the air quality so they can set the wood floor. They're going to start painting the binder coat tomorrow for the parking areas. So they're on task there at the high school. And like I said, the high school's been thoroughly cleaned and ready to go for Monday morning. MBIS has the ongoing roof project.
Kilns and the art room?
Kilns and the art room are in place, but they are not connected because the starters did not come in. The starters, I talked to Barrett, electrician for Gilbein. The starters are supposed to arrive tomorrow, hopefully. And then we're going to give Barrett time to hook them up. Hopefully they're going to arrive, he says.
But everything else is...
Everything else is ready, yeah. They did everything else in that room except for just tying, actually tying the kilns in electrically. We have an appointment with the company to come in, Rusty Kill to come in and do the vent work and test fire the kilns as soon as they're ready to go. That's been a long, ongoing process. I don't blame Ms. Kaplan for getting on it easy. It's been, it's been taking a long time.
We doubled the capacity, not only in the size, but we have two large kilns. They're two times the size of what we have. So that's a good thing. A little patience, a little pain, but along the right direction.
He worked it, he worked it in the long run. MBIS has the ongoing roof project. They also are about 65% done. The building is weather tight. What you see on the building, that white roof, that's actually the white, weatherproof binder that goes, the green roof will go on top of that. The green roof arrives today. The green roof panels, which they thought was going to not come until September, actually started arriving today. So hopefully our project will kick up. They'll start going into their afternoon hours when school starts, like they did before. They'll work from 2:30 on, so they won't interfere with school. The masonry project is about 99% done. All they have is the wall where the loading dock is, which won't interfere with the educational space, so they'll wrap them up probably before school starts. That school's been hectic for the custodians this year. Probably had to play a little hop, skip, and jump. We had to follow the roofing project around because when they tear the roof out, the dust and everything came down, we had to clean. So kudos to my MBIS crew. The building looks great, and they had to deal with the roofing project all summer long. They're going to get everything out of the parking lots and off the sidewalks and everything before school starts. That we had another meeting with them to make sure that that is done and the place is completely clean and safe for students to return. We did some much-needed painting at MBIS this year. They're, actually, they're still painting. That will be ready for the start of school. That school definitely needs a paint schedule, so we started that, and I'm glad we did. Totucket Valley had the most work.
Good one question. So obviously with the roofing conditions, it's, we just had a record rainfall last year. I'm sure some water came through.
Over the course of the roofing job, we've had time to time where we had water come into the building. You know, they tear off the old roof, try to get the new roof on. Sometimes they don't know that, you know, a storm is going to come through quick. We've probably had maybe six to eight occasions where water had infiltrated into the building. Seal tiles were ruined, you know, there was stuff down, you know, because the store had to clean up and make sure nothing was ruined. Teachers, there's been some stuff that got damaged. Some stuff, we took it all into account. Anytime that happened, we reported that to QA&amp;M, who is the overseer of the property architectural firm, and they addressed it with Barrett. A lot of those things have been reported to the building committee on their Carson's report. But all in all, for the amount of work that they're doing on that roof, weather-wise, they're doing a pretty god-darn good job. Because you have to totally rip the old roof off. You would expose while you're putting the new roof on. And it's not, you know, it's not a house roof. It's quite a project.
So the communication is good whenever there is...
Communication has been great with Chris Como and Barrett Roofing. Yeah, they've been unbelievable to work with. So, you know, whenever we have a leak, I call him, he meets me in the morning, he comes down, his crew comes out, sees where it is. As a matter of fact, he even asked us what style seal tiles, and his crew came in and replaced the whole hallway that got wet with seal tiles. We didn't have to do it.
Wow.
Yeah, we appreciate, appreciate their help on that.
Thank you.
Totucket Valley was busy this year. We replaced the gymnasium floor. The gymnasium floor, as you know, was an insurance claim because of water damage. The floor came out very nice. We are dealing with the insurance company now for the final disbursement and payment as long as everybody's satisfied to pay. Company came in and did the job. They had to come back and do some stuff. They came back and took care of that. So we are just waiting for the insurance company's final approval right now. We need a walk-in cooler and walk-in freezer replacement. The boxes are installed. They're coming back tomorrow for the final connections so we can get those up and running. And they'll be ready for Christine's Tuesday food delivery. We replaced the girls', two girls' gang last bathroom stalls. They came out beautiful. The room was completely cleaned and painted. The stalls were, they look so much brighter, and hopefully the constable motoros and getting more complaints from the female students. They are a nice set of stalls. They came out beautiful. So again, much needed all the time. Unit ventilators were installed. It is still ongoing. The HVAC company is still helping up the air conditioning part of some of them, but they're all installed, they're ready for heating. If heating comes and the air conditioning, like I said, they're, it's ongoing, they're continuing. All the rooms still have the window units in case they don't have them up and operating yet. So we'll still be comfortable in there. We had a lot of painting done in that building as well. We, a classroom had to be divided due to extra space. We divided the classroom. Now it's half the faculty room and half the classroom because the old faculty room was turned into the learning center right now. That's done. A lot of seal tiles were replaced in the building by the store staff. So like I said, a lot of work was done at Totucket Valley this year, which is, again, much needed. I don't think that building's going anywhere, so hopefully needing that building is best we can do. Yeah.
Can I ask you how old that building is?
1970? 1970, 1970 it opened.
So next phase down the road will be the windows, will locate a window?
We can do windows there. Another thing I'm seeking for Totucket Valley, we'll get some pricing going on there. I'd like to air condition the gymnasium. That room is not climate-controlled. We can install split units like that. They make very big commercial ones. I think if we put two on that sidewall, we could actually cool that building, cool that room. So we're seeking some engineers and some quotes on that.
That would be the only part of the building that...
That's the only part of the building that does not have air conditioning.
So that would be a major capital. Windows over time, it would be some...
Windows and, yeah. Because that building now has updated lighting. And now has, ventilators taken care of, and the air conditioning for the office, cafeteria, and library. Those parts are air-conditioned, so the only thing that is not is the gymnasium. Hopefully we can get that done. At Stanley T. Williams, we did an abatement project in room six of the FRC. We had to take up asbestos flooring, and we laid down the floor. Playground is being installed outside that the community received a grant for. Thank Public Works for all their help on that playground project. They're doing an awesome job getting that done for Jerome Harrison. We didn't plan any large projects for Jerome Harrison this year. Seeing we had summer school and summer camp there. So Jerome Harrison, basic cleaning and basic maintenance work, which is ongoing still. Be ongoing probably over the weekend and Monday and Tuesday as well. But we'll be ready for everything.
The only thing at Jerome that we're looking to do is put a playground out in front of the playground area for the kids to have a park service area to bounce balls on and play games. We don't have an arena now, we can't do parking there. So we've worked with Danny Salatano and the town. John has worked with the local paper, and PTO has donated the cost to do that.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, we're excited. So we're looking to, hopefully before they can pay shut down the pay, to cut that thing out and get it done. That would be a huge benefit to those little guys over there. We have the trike program, we have all of the trike, but it's hard, you know? People come in on the weekends, and they use that. And we want to put a basketball hoop out just because we can drop it down for the little guys and make them, you know, have good games.
Sounds like you guys were really, really busy. Thank you so much for getting all that done.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
And if you, the town council, at Tuesday's town council meeting, they approved to put the air conditioning replacement for Jerome Harrison and the auditorium out the bid. So that'll hit the street. That takes 30 days, and then it'll be 30 days to try and get the quotes back. We'll have to do walkthroughs and then delay how long it's going to take to get the equipment. So you're probably looking at early spring for those replacements, so they're up and running for the summer.
John already knows the equipment in those two areas inside out. He knows the chill room and the parts that need to be replaced, the amount of labor. He had done this originally and looked at it. It got a little delayed on the town side, so we're hoping that gets expedited. But John will be present for all of that. Will be with ears and eyes on the ground with those projects. Because as you know, we've run that auditorium out, and we use that as a working classroom for our theater arts program, our music program as well. And we house our TV studio there, I'm sorry, as well. So that's important. If we lose air conditioning in there, we have a very expensive piano on the stage, maybe a piano that I worry about. If we lose AC, we wouldn't be able to have those instructional classes. I have a great deal of technology in there in my TV studio. So that's critical. At Jerome Harrison, that gymnasium, if that goes down with AC, and it's an 85, 89-degree day, we can't have the little ones in there. And anyone with any medical situation has one, for example. This is important. This is something that needs to be done ASAP. Anyone have any questions?
I would just like to express my sincere gratitude to you and your entire staff. If you haven't lived what the custodians do, you have no idea. So I would like to say, you know, on behalf of myself, that I truly appreciate all that you all do to get the buildings ready for the year.
They do, they do an amazing job.
So please pass that on to your staff.
They really do. They take my staff, their hard work and does.
I'll second that, Judy, for sure.
I do have, so with Jerome Harrison being occupied, it sounds like 12 months out of the year, right? I mean, it's the two summer programs, right? Which will shift back up to Totucket next summer. Right. So now that, that kind of happened, like, I don't know if that would happen year over year, but now that it's going to shift, is that gives, is there any, like, major wish list or kind of like concerns that you're seeing in JHS that might be on their horizon? Like, oh, that's coming? I mean, talking big-ticket stuff.
We've been on most of the stuff at Jerome Harrison. Jerome Harrison, everybody forgets, it's already 25 years old, you know? So big equipment, we've been keeping an eye on. We did change the coolant tower for the chiller system back a little while ago. That was a major replacement. We're keeping an eye on the chiller. We may have to do a compressor on the chiller. We're keeping an eye on that right now. It's a dual-stage, one's operating fine, one's giving us a little bit of trouble, so we may have to replace one. This here, this replacer for the gymnasium air conditioning is big. And then we already changed the water heater there. And we've done some boiler burner work there. So we're keeping up on the large ticket items at Jerome Harrison. Luckily, we haven't had any roof it. We had some minor roof issues at Jerome Harrison.
That was the insurance...
That steel roof is okay.
That was TBS, TBS, yeah, sorry.
So we're, we keep an eye on all of the buildings for large ticket items to see what we're looking to replace down the road.
The freezer and refrigerator over there, we'd have to keep an eye on because they eat out 25...
Yeah, again, freezer, refrigerator. They're in pretty decent shape at Jerome Harrison. Jerome Harrison's cool, it's constructed pretty well, actually. So we're holding, we're holding pretty good there.
Thank you. We're looking at parking, too. That's one of the things that we do.
That's a big thing.
We're, I was hooked up the other day with Danny Salatano, and certainly John could be a part of all this, but we walked the entire facility. We're looking at some things in the back for for safer address widening that entrance point in the back to stay off America. And then out front, now that they've taken the baseball field out of there, if we could put some more parking in that front, what it would look like without interfering with the field.
Nice. We can get some additional parking at Jerome. That's really what we need.
And we took we took paving out of capital last year. So that's something that has to go back in because that part of the line is gone at Jerome and then Totoka's going to work too. So just keep that on your radar. I think that's.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely have to put paving back on.
Any questions?
Just a random question. Is there I'm very appreciative of new high school and I do not anticipate for decades seeing any other new schools. So with that being said, is there a discussion about kind of like a future plan instead of sinking money into two schools that we know will need to be renovated as or not renovated, but maybe rebuilt at some point?
Well, the middle high school are are done and we.
I mean, like our elementary school.
So with what you've done at Totoka Valley with the tin pitched roof, the heat and cooling system being updated, and if we got windows out of that, that's bricks and mortar. Those buildings would build better than the middle schools.
But we think those have.
It's a better structure. Yeah. And Jerome, like, you know, we said 25 years. It's it's still in great shape. We're gonna we're gonna do some things cosmetically, face value. Really, we'll look at the landscaping of all of our buildings, power washing, cleaning. But those buildings are.
But we don't think like 10, 15 years from now, we're going to be looking at.
Well, Jerome, Totoka Valley, believe it or not, Totoka Valley was built it was built like a bomb shelter. That that school was built as an all electric school. So that's why the windows were so small in the classrooms. That was an all electric heat school, which didn't last very long before they Tom fucked up. They were paying big money for that. So but but those walls are all insulated. They're all insulated exterior walls at Totoka Valley off, styrofoam inside the walls. The the roof up to Totoka Valley is concrete. It's actually, you could put a second floor on that building if you really want. It was built that way. So that building is that's a solid building. So, you know, Totoka Valley, if you wanted to do anything to that building, I mean, renovating that building and cosmetically making it look better, we updated the lighting. That made it look 100% better. You know, you could replace ceiling tiles, you could paint, you could replace flooring tiles if you had to. The only bad thing about that is it's nine by nine asbestos tile. So if you were to if you were to bake that whole building, you're talking millions of dollars. But we could do like we did the old high school and take a section at a time and have paid it if you wanted to, you know, do a wing at a time, take the classroom floor from the hallway up and replace it with it if you wanted to. You wouldn't have to do the whole building at once. That's something you could do if you decided Totoka Valley could do that. But we are trying to upgrade Totoka Valley all we can, you know, doing a doing a small, you know, spot projects every every summer.
Does that answer your question? In my lifetime?
But most of our space, like I said, the auditorium is not old, you know, the intermediate school, you know, it's our building's fairly new.
Right.
This building, we just.
With this new high.
We just put a roof on this building. So this isn't going anywhere.
Right. We're fortunate that, you know, we have a maintenance team that can do what they do, being, you know, licensed and, you know, 10 different things, you know.
We do a lot of work in-house. When we talk to other districts, they they can't believe the amount of work we do in-house. So I gotta thank my staff and the guys jumping and do anything we need to do. They voluntarily jump in and do it.
Sounds great.
We're in good shape. Our buildings are in good shape. We really are. All right, that's it for John. I'm going to sort of listen to make sure.
Thank you.
You get all those bees and wasps out of there?
Marble actually is a bird's nest.
Oh, don't mean the birds when I said, not the birds, I mean the bees. We're not talking birds and bees. All right. So moving on, summer camp, we just mentioned that it was at Totoka Valley. I want to thank that for her flexibility and her staff for accommodating to the camp and the summer school. Sarah and Kathy did an amazing job coordinating, keeping it safe, making sure that summer school was not interrupted by the camp. And the camp did a great job of staying in their space. Amber Lake and Megan Barnes were the co-directors this year. We had 10 certified staff members working, which is a good thing. If you figure you teach, you know, 181 days plus and you do everything and then you come back in the summer as a certified teacher to work your almost your entire summer with children, I think that says a lot about passion and commitment. So that was a good thing. They had a great camp. Participation was strong and we look forward to another year next year. So thank you for your support. That camp is the, you know, it's the talk of the town. It's exceptional for what we offer and what those kids are exposed to and can do. It's it's a special it's a special place for kids in the summer. So who owes to them?
Yes. My grandson did a couple of camps. He really enjoyed it. I have a question. He did pickleball one of the most before. They bussed it from Jerome to Durham for pickleball. My question is, but we have a pickleball here.
You're not going to put me in the middle of pickleball.
What's major?
You try to take those courts away from those people who were not from North Frankfurt. Did I just say that?
But are they paid for the use of it?
So no. So what happened was, I'll be really quick with this. We were scheduled to use the high school courts for pickleball for our camp. The Park and Rec did a refurbishing of and painting of the courts. They were told the date. They didn't meet that date. So we, at the last minute, had to move ours because we were in a jam. So getting on here with what that would have created, we went to Durham, we ate the charge of the bus and our camp did that. Next year, we'll be at the the high school on those pickleball courts. They'll be done. So it was because of, you know, them resurfacing and then they missed the date and they were just doing it in the last week. So.
We can't get a gamble on. We have a pickleball court. They're not paying to use it, but we couldn't kick them off for kids.
You're not putting me in the middle of that.
Maybe.
No.
I mean, I'm.
I like a good pickleball.
But I just.
Right.
It's an amenity for the town, for the taxpayers.
We're on.
And if they're well used, but they're out of town, they're using it. They're not all residents.
I'm not, listen, I don't want to be the whistle bawling. I'm just minding my business. I hear that ball from the edge all day long.
That's all the part of the.
I hear that.
That is that is not a board admit thing. That's a parking rec thing.
Right. So we're on it. Next year, we're going to pickleball. We'll be at the high school on those courts. This year.
You have to transport them to the high school. You still.
Yeah, we buss them down there.
You won't walk them from TBS to here.
That would make too much sense. If you could be able to.
We have enough people with signs and protests to get them off.
I'm staying out of this, but I like your idea.
We'll talk to Jesse at Park and Rec.
Yeah, that's part of it.
She sets it up for them to use it.
For she she's in charge of the pickleball.
But they're not making any money out of that.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that.
All right, good question.
Can I just reiterate your your thoughts on the camp? My granddaughter went all summer to the camp. And I think that good programs come from good leaders. And I think that Amber and Megan both did an amazing job, both with the quality of the camps that they offered, the safety for the kids that were there. As a just as a quick little anecdotal, my granddaughter would not allow me to pick her up early, ever. And, you know, it was like, no, don't don't come at 2:30. It's too early. We're having popsicles. We're playing on the, you know, it was just so and that's always, I think, speaks volumes to to a program when your child doesn't want to get picked up early. So kudos to them.
With who they have.
Absolutely. Little day program offered. Like, that's the most feedback that I hear from people with young kids is that there are all these half day programs or like a 91. So having eight to four, I think, is helpful for working parents. So thank you to them for giving up so much of their summer.
No, I agree.
Really creative.
We're lucky. Our kids are lucky.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments about camp, I'm going to move on to the town manager. We went on Tuesday night, we bargained with Marcie for we agreed with the council for our common negotiation with administrators. We're about to do that for the teachers and for the administrators. It was a 10-minute meeting and it's just to go through ground rules and who's going to represent the town council. So Reed Diamond is the person who's going to be working with us on negotiations. And we'll get started with that over the next several weeks. We have to be finished with that process through in October. So we'll move quickly on that. And the renovation project, I know that we spoke about that John did, but just I'm just briefly going to go through. I met with Amar and Camille the other day from Gilbane. Pretty much all the classrooms are complete except for the hanging of the briefing boards, which will be are going in. Tom, our director of the 19 month scale, has been incredibly, very incredibly lucky to have him. And he's been over there with all of the tech ends for the wiring, putting those things up, making sure they're functioning. His knowledge and expertise in that, we are very fortunate. So that's going very well. Side locks are 90% complete. As John mentioned, they're going to skim coat, start paving tomorrow. Furniture's going to move in, start moving in September 3rd. They're going to start moving classroom furniture in September 3rd. We're hoping for the last week of September. I'm going to go out and say the last week of September, we're looking to be in there. That gym floor, I'm hoping by the second week of October, we're on that gym and that way our volleyball team can finish up and have their senior day in there at the end of October. So that's our plan right now. We've made that public with them. They're tiling inside. The final cleaning will start September 20th. It's exciting and things are moving along. So if we get days like today and we continue to get good weather, it's going to happen. So any questions on that?
No.
Okay, thank you. I do I do want to just before we go to committee reports, the freshmen had their orientation today, incoming freshmen, new students that will be coming into the high school. And I asked Megan Lee to put together some bullet points for me at our meeting today. So 95% of our freshman class attended. 98 of 104 students were attendants.
That's pretty good.
Many parents and grandparents and siblings attended the event to support their child's transition to high school. It was the biggest turnout ever that we had. 10th, 11th, 12th grade student leaders facilitated small group discussions and school tours for our incoming parent freshmen. Parents participated in parent orientation with school administration. They were provided with an overview of the board policies, if they had the opportunity to ask questions. Students and families picked up their Chromebooks at the end of the event and enjoyed pizza lunch in our cafeteria. They also had hamburgers and chicken sandwiches if you're interested, John. Thank you to Bill Wall, Chardine students who organized and supported our student leaders, as well as our tech team, Tom and his crew, and Todd and Megan Ford for their leadership there. It was a great day. One that we were very proud of. So they played us with the ground running. And that's it. We're on to committee reports.
Okay. The board has provided an updated copy of committee assignments. As board chair, I have filled the vacancies left by the former board chair. So we can. Do you want us to go into executive session over this or just?
Well, that's up to you. We don't have to. It's been signed by the paraprofessionals. I do have the highlights for you. I'm going to pass these around of the negotiations that are returning put together. So if you take a look at that, if there's nothing that you have any question, we do have Marcie here, who's staff. Would you see the non-division with Zach? If you do have any specific questions, we really.
No, it went very well. It went very smoothly.
I missed a couple of them. I was there for the first one because I've escaped for two of them. But I was informed that every term, so it went well. It's been signed by the paraprofessionals. So if there's no questions, you can fold on it and you'll sign it tonight and then it's in file.
Very, very besides besides salary, I mean, very minimal changes.
Right.
Just completing up some language for the most part and whatnot.
Right.
Give me a minute to look it over and then if there's any questions, I'll make a mention.
And then please remind me to have it signed at the end of the meeting. I have it with me here.
How many steps are there?
Uh, nine.
We got rid of one. How many steps are there?
Nine.
Yeah.
Nine.
What do you think was the biggest changes?
Salary.
The salary. And also benefits after 15 years?
That's been in there. There wasn't a change to that.
Oh, okay. So that's been there. Okay.
Yeah, no, the biggest thing was salary. Just a little cleanups, but.
Okay. Do you know how many paraprofessionals would be eligible for the benefits in that upcoming year? Fiscal, finance budget?
Breakdown?
For 15 and over?
Correct.
There's only like three or there's only like three that take it. There's only like three paraprofessionals that take it. There's about, how many paraprofessionals are there?
Eighty?
Something like that. Between 80 and 90. Somewhere between 80 and 90 overall. But there's only three that take it. Any other questions?
I'll just comment that I'm very pleased to see the step movement over the next three years, especially, you probably heard me gasp when I got to the end and saw that they'd been frozen for 13 of the past 18 years. So thank you for making that a priority.
They deserved it. It was a priority and.
Yes, they were very hard.
They do. They work very, very hard. They have a hard job and they're very dedicated. And that was a priority of ours was increasing their salary and getting some step movement in there was really important. So the rest.
I will say, moving forward as we continue to venture into, you know, difficult times, that it's not going to go away, but, you know, we we are at difficult times to retain paraprofessionals. And they need to go to neighboring towns because of wage and benefits. And it's something that's been around forever. It's not a new conversation. It's it's an obvious conversation. And the group worked really hard to try to level the playing field, but we're still significantly behind. So I'll leave it at that. They're critical in our classrooms.
Absolutely.
And what they do, and a lot of people don't really know what they do. And and some of the paras that have to work with our media's children, they're amazing. So we're going to continue on difficult times. You know what our increase was last year, 1.5%. And you know the difficult cuts that we had to make in those decisions. But I just wanted to be out there. And that's an acknowledgement to paraprofessionals that we are aware and we realize the challenges that there will be on. So we may make a decision.
I see. Were these steps frozen because of budgets?
Anything frozen over time is money related.
Because unfortunately, between certain steps, you're looking at a 3%, 4%, 5% increase just between the steps. Then you give a general wage increase of, you know, 2, 2003%. It adds up quickly, you know? So that's why I think what was important, what my sense from them was what was important was salary. And we knew salary was important from our side. And I mean, did we give them what we would have liked to have given them? We can't. But like Scott said, just, yeah.
It's a show of good faith.
We can't do it in one contract, you know? So it's it's a work in progress.
Thank you, Director Marcie.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the North Bradford Board of Education and the North Bradford Federation of Paraprofessionals, Local Number 6152 of the AFTCT, AFL-CIO, for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? If none, this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Do you want to pass me that folder?
Oh, it's signed. You forgot. Okay, I appreciate that. Great confidence.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, we have first read.
Not the ancient person.
Yes, please.
Attention, yes, that they've done good work in all our plans and they exceed benchmarks and plans are doing well. And the recommend saying, of course, election of the election of future, that they're doing well. So. The policy, the policy reads, a lot of these are some updating of some legal language, new state statutes, so causing 10, 15 such discrimination against our students. We have the high school graduation requirements that were updated, 14, 90 physical activities. Fourteen ninety, physical activity, hard work and student discipline. There is actually new registration on play-based activities. Also, twenty-two thirty, prohibition of sex discrimination, sexual harassment in the workplace. Twenty-three seventy, sexual use of new train and safety. This one was brought before the group sent it back. It has to put in acceptance for AI or not. And I think there's some discussion we should cover that, I think. And it was brought up at the meeting that maybe they wanted to do some kind of workshop for the teachers. And I think that maybe we need to do some kind of workshop for us to better understand AI. And different things brought up at the meeting that other towns were even putting in because AI was being used to generate report card comments or answer emails. And some towns are actually putting in that, doing that. So I know about AI, but I don't know enough to say totally gay to any kind of thing. I know about the rest of you, but I would like someone to comment on that.
So I will charge Tom, our director of...
I'm sorry.
Prose and cons. I'm just rubbing off on you. Like rapidly, you know? So like what we even know today is not relevant. Not mine, you know?
He will, he will delve into a workshop for the board. And he'll be working with the teachers and staff as well, administration. And we'll have something put together. We'll bring it back to you. So we've already had those conversations as administrative team and he's well versed in...
So is it something that we could do in safer section or something? So that people can talk about it?
Sure. Under school safety.
Or something more?
Yep. As part of our safety.
Beth, is it under twenty-three seventy, right? Page seven?
Twenty-three seventy, page seven.
Is that, that's that whole section there that we're concerned about? There's really two paragraphs. I mean, I read through the thing, but I think that was the only part. It says got a highlighted section on page seven?
Yes.
That's it, right there, right?
Yes.
So it's like a... Go ahead.
Yeah, the headline is prohibited uses. And then we have all the bullets. So the last bullet would be either we allow AI or don't. That was misunderstood the last time. So if you look on page six, it says prohibited uses. And we have all those bullets. This would be the last one. So we will...
Yeah.
But I would like more information about that.
Yes, I'll take a moment.
Next, I'll say P three-one-hundred homeschool, that is a new one. P ninety-one thirty, construction and personal agenda. I think that was just updating it.
Excuse me, I have one question about the homeschool. And it said if you, if parents choose to homeschool, that their children would not be eligible to play in any...
Yeah, they refrain the ability to participate in extracurricular activities.
So why is that?
It's been a conversation for years. You know, with that, with liability, with a number of different things, with what our student athletes or what they have to go through. And it's, it's one that, this has been an age-old conversation, you know, that to be, you know...
I'm new, so I haven't heard of conversation.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's one that...
We hold our athletes to a higher standard and, you know, and they're not...
Well, with eligibility standards and with what we require our student athletes to do and complete. And then, you know, people feel differently on it. It's, you know, if you're a taxpayer, then I should have a right to participate. And others argue that, well, you know, to be a part of it, you would be enrolled full-time as a student and, you know, be involved in the course, the curriculum, the required credits and what we require to graduate, to be able to then participate. That extracurricular is just that. It's, it's, it's extra, it's on top of the learning piece. It's a privilege to be a part of that, to be a part of your, you know, school. I don't know, Sarah, if you want to...
Actually, it's C I C requirement.
For?
Above and beyond. I think it's under C I C.
To be a full-time.
They have to be registered to the district.
Take this.
There you go.
Okay.
What if you go to a magnet school?
You can play for your hometown, I believe. If you go, you can play for those.
If the magnet school offers the program.
You have to play there.
The mouth offers where you're allowed to.
Right. So we've had some kids that would go off, but played hard teams because their magnet school didn't offer this. And so I guess the answer is called C I C if you want. We don't really have, we haven't had a...
I don't have a mission about that.
Kids who, you know, are homeschooled haven't requested, you know, for services for anything with the arts or stuff.
All right.
So P ninety-one thirty has to do with the agenda. And let's just some clarifying language. The last time that it was revised was in twenty fifteen. So some of these were going to change laws because of...
These are first reads, so we don't need any actual reading.
Can I just make a comment about the amount of policies that we were...
This is not this compared to from...
Okay, but we can control the timing and amount that we receive at one time. It's just, it's a heavy, it's a heavy load. It is very content heavy. I know people on the board, we're volunteers, but we've got parents with young children, active children, schoolchildren, you know, working several jobs or whatnot. So if we could just be a little more cognizant of, you know, the amount...
Four to three months?
Yeah.
Well, it really comes down to if they're statutory and we have to do them and they're outdated. That takes high priority. But as Beth said, tell me, these have been sitting for nine years and they're quick cleanups. I mean, high force of agenda. But I get it. If you have one that, you know, graduation requirements, use of cell phones or, you know, anything like that, that's kind of a tight, very thick on time. So we can try to...
We have a lot that haven't been done for years. Sarah is trying to, is trying to update that and get the language more uniform across all policies.
Sarah's our turn.
Okay, so we can expect...
Two, two years of COVID, we didn't need, so we could kind of fall behind in the two-year stretch. We're not here, so we're trying to dig our way out of that.
I also have some comments on all of these policies. So I had some thoughts as I was reading them and I know that I won't get the answers tonight, but I'd like to at least bring forward the things that came to mind as I was reading. With regard to the P one oh one five for the prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. And it also appeared in the administrative regulations in that as well as later in the P two-two-three-oh, the personnel side of it, so students, administrative personnel. My question, or by lack of understanding, was with, I don't have any page numbers, so I'm sorry, I can't give them out to you. But with regard in each of those to where it's describing a hostile environment harassment, I questioned why there were, I'll call them qualifiers. So in other words, to me, if you're being sexually harassed, there should be a zero, a zero tolerance policy. So it shouldn't matter the type or frequency or duration or the age of the person who's participating in the harassment or the location. So those were just things that came to me, like in other words, I want everyone here to be safe, whether you're a student, whether you're an adult. And I didn't understand those qualifiers. I get that they're probably a legal thing that had to be in there, but I at least wanted to bring that up. Another thing that was not mentioned in these was at what point does the police department become involved? And one of them, it said concurrent investigations were taking place.
Anything that's illegal or anything that we deem to be threatening to the first staff or student?
Would automatically, okay. All right, it wasn't in there, so I just...
First read. So the policy committee we sat, and I remember Sarah speaking to that, if the students in the class in the room, we had that conversation, if they acted out, we take immediate action. But as you lead the policy, there's a certain amount of steps that have to be followed before you get to that action. So any of these questions should come back to us from your first read. They go to Sarah, Lisa. She gives us her legal opinion. That's why we work with the attorney. This is a perfect example of why, you know, you have representation. Beth is not going to answer that question.
Right, I know.
Or nor mine because there's a reason, it's a statute. So anything that you see, get to us and we will get it to Sarah. We'll have it ready for the next week.
Would you prefer I just email these then rather than say them?
Because then we get it, we get...
I'm happy to do that. I didn't know that was the process.
Yes. And it's an easier process because it's in writing and then you're going to get the answer back.
I'll do that.
We'll include the entire board.
Okay, I'll do that.
And I think like a lot of issues, like they don't want to leave language like ambiguous, which is why I think there's more is more in this. It's that way there's not that confusion.
No, I know. And I know there's, there's grayness that needs to be in there. I understand all of that, but I just, there were certain things that I would like some clarification on.
That's why we hired the best legal team in the state of Connecticut to represent us.
And October, so October ninth is the next policy meeting.
So if you can get those to me in the next two weeks.
You'll have it tomorrow.
Dude, I already know the answer.
I know. They're already written out.
I already...
Already have email written, no, I'm kidding.
And I'll share with the board all the responses and what we've got on the end.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's also definitions that I would like clarified as well.
Yeah. Absolutely.
He says there was no meeting. Building Committee?
We kind of went past the... Down with the death, I think. I think we're pretty square, wait.
Yes, we had, we did have quite a bit of information on that communication. No meeting. Are we going to do a adjournment? No, we're not going to adjourn. Adjournment, okay. Then we're at visitors and press. And good of the board, that was, I already made that suggestion about spreading those policies out.
That's something, it was asked of me a while ago. There was a question about reserving the high school baseball field on Saturdays for Monday to this Connecticut Mets baseball program. And I guess they were directed to the Board of Ed. And they just wondered if there was anything else they had to do. I guess they put in an application. Is that all they had to do?
Well, it's a, it's a multi-tier request because there's so many things. I'll just put it out there. Our fields are in poor condition. And right now, the baseball field, the outfield sits about six inches lower than the infield and there's a lot of holes. So I feel that two complaints from parents about the conditions of the field. So now we're trying to balance between more things being done to the fields on the weekends when we're not here with the construction project going on. So we're kind of pushing things out right now until we can, until we can get ahead of it. Because people come in and I don't want to say that it's the softball guys that play, I don't know who it is, that comes and play at the sports place, but then they come down. And John will support me on this. They climb over the fences, they're at Jerome Harrison, they're at the high school. They hit balls into the fences, they leave their garbage there. And then we have to come in and we clean it. And it's been going on for years, so if, I don't want to be, you know, I love that people want to use our fields and we want to use them, but when there are outsiders coming in and then we bear the burden of having to repair and replace, it gets a little old.
I don't understand that there are a lot of North Bradford kids on the team. He was just questioning, he sent in an application. I don't know if you've heard anything, how we could...
If you want to send it to me, then I can get an answer.
Well, you tried a lot. I think we did receive that. We didn't confirm athletic record column or personal conflicts. I believe it was four or five weekends during October on Saturdays and Sundays. But our interpretation is the first word of the policy, the initial policy is that it's a profit organization. So there's a fee that's attached to the application form that individuals aware of is submitted for.
Because they have to line the fields, they have to drag the fields, there's a lot that goes into it. And if it's an expensive ours, now they can, they can pick the expense up through the rental and do it. But a lot of times, we have no porta potties out there right now. So then what happens is the fencing is up all the way around. Where are they going to go? Even to get out to the fields right now because they had to put the lines, the power lines and the pole lines in out to our field. It's really a hazard getting out there. So there's many, many factors that go into why we're kind of tight right now. We never want to say no to our kids using the fields, my gosh, we more than encourage that. But we have a lot going on in that campus.
Well, I understand.
No, I know. I'm not...
The slogan suggested that they watch this meeting.
Yeah.
The same people approached me as well and I mean, they said, well, they, I was told the Board of Ed has to approve it. I said, no, we don't approve it. I said, you can go. When they say Board of Ed, I think they mean the Board of Ed office here. And I told them to call here to find out the process.
Supposedly they did, but that's what I need to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if Mr. Stuffer's aware of it, that means that it's in the queue for either a yes or a no. But it's important that the board knows that, you know, there's, there's so much more that goes into just you use the field or not. You know, we have to, there were cuts we had to make. We took the porta potties out of there because I was paying ten thousand dollars a year. I'm going to have to put a couple of back there, but that's the fallout from tough decisions. And that has nothing to do with what it does because where, people are going to be out there, they're going to be in. There's no buildings and things, so what do we do? And that'll be the first, that'll be the first home point you get, well, there's no porta potties, the building's in, we can't get in. And we're out here for four hours on a Saturday playing baseball.
Proof of insurance.
Yeah, proof of insurance, like which I'm sure. No, you listen, you did a good job there. And we'll, we'll be the ones.
Yes, James, I apologize, I've done a ton of talking tonight, but I think it's important. I was able to express my gratitude to the custodians, but I would also like to thank the dedicated teaching staff and pairs that have been in already, working on their classrooms to try to be prepared for next week. That's a huge job in itself to prepare mentally and physically, get your classroom looking the way you'd like it to be. So thank you to all of them and to our administrative team who are here tonight. You're behind the scenes and people don't see all the work that you do to prep for the school year, but I remember. And I know that you're planning PD and that you're doing a lot of things to get ready. So also I wanted to just express my gratitude to you for all that you're doing. I'm excited for Monday for the breakfast. I'm coming anyway, even though I'm not any longer an employee. And I, I know that, I'm just saying that it's, it's a, it's a great day, that first day. And everyone leaves very excited and enthusiastic and, but a lot of work went into it. So thank you all for everything that you do.
I am mentally ready for school to start.
That's a great cue, everyone knows Monday morning.
Six sleeps.
Even like you said, I mean, all summer, I reached out to data change. Can I ask you a question before we... How about your email? It's not, but it is about working out. Our, the email that you sent us with the pictures of the kids working out over on Tautucket, is that something that's traditionally available for them, like in the high school in previous?
So our high school students, yes. When we shut down the gymnasium, when the high school came down, I rented the warehouse space and we transformed it into a little, and so we've been running it. And we had activities for sports teams during the academic year. And then in the summer, we had Mr. White there and he was chaperoning, supervising, working with kids that wanted to go. So teams were coming, individuals were coming. It was a beautiful thing for the high school kids. So, you know, on any given day, we might have forty, fifty kids go through there. And sometimes forty kids at a time were there. So it was great. It was a great social, safe place for the kids to be. And they loved it.
We have graduates to come back and use it.
Yeah, we have, the, the, the police department comes in at night, fire comes in and they work out.
Police department has their own excellent stuff.
Yeah, but this is the one we have.
I was driving by and they just found you outside, you were sunning.
I was supervised. It wasn't sunning. Don't put me under the bus.
It was after hours.
That's fine, I'm sure you put me under the bus.
So what, once the school, high school...
We have a new facility.
Is up and running. Would, would that be open during the summer months for teams and individuals to...
I don't want to say too much. Because it's on the second floor of the building.
Yes.
In a building that has got a lot of valuable things in it. So I'm working with the owner of the warehouse to enter into the agreement where it would cost us, I hope he's not watching the meeting, and, and keep that for summer months because it is a gem. It's an... It's an absolute gem for the kids. It has a basketball room, it has bathrooms, it has everything, it's wheelchair accessible.
It is really well-used.
And the kids love it.
Yeah.
So we're in the works of trying to keep that and use that during the summer months.
Right.
So that's a blessing.
Okay. That's good information. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 19, 2024. And with that...
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
We drew so quickly.
I did.
Hey, we entered...
I sure, and first people seconded it. So give it to Zach, I heard Zach.
I'll do it, second.
I'll do it.
Zach, you want it?
All right, thank you, everybody else.